All right, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the November 24th, 2020 meeting of the Oshkosh Common Council. And we are called to order. And will the quick please take the roll?
Ford.
Here.
Allison Askey.
Here.
Rosie.
Here.
Brewer.
Here.
Erickson. Tatchell.
Here.
Omari.
Here.
Present seven.
All right, Councilmember Ford will lead us in the invocation filed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
All right, may all of our decisions and discussions this evening reflect the best interests of the residents of Oshkosh.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic that we serve.
Which it stands one nation, under God, with liberty and justice for all. All righty, we have a special presentation this evening by Central States Water Environment Association, the William D. Hatfield Award presentation. I believe David Arnott of Rickert and Milkie representing CSWEA. Is Mr. Rickert, or I'm sorry, Mr. Milkie here?
I am here, I am Dave Arnott, yes.
Yes, thank you.
All right, thank you, everyone, good evening. My name is Dave Arnott. I am from the Central States Water Environment Association and also the Water Environment Federation. I'm here tonight to present an important award to the city water and wastewater utility manager, Steve Brand. Excited to be here tonight. Before I get into the award itself, I'd like to talk about the two organizations that are giving this award. So the Water Environment Federation is a not-for-profit technical and educational organization of 35,000 individual members and 75 affiliated member associations. Central States Water Environment Association is a member association. The Water Environment Federation has been around since 1928. The Central States Water Environment Association serves the states of Illinois, Minnesota, and Wisconsin. And it offers multiple opportunities for the exchange of water quality, knowledge, and information amongst among its members and to the public to foster a greater awareness of water quality in our world. So, um, the William D. Hatfield Award is presented to operators of wastewater treatment plants for outstanding performance and professionalism. The award was established in honor of Dr. William D. Hatfield, who was the superintendent of the Decatur, Illinois sanitary district and who was president of Central States Water Environment Association from 1944 through 1946. The William D. Hatfield Award is given in recognition of outstanding professional service in both facility operations and public education. So I am proud to present the 2020 winner of the William D. Hatfield Award to Steve Brand tonight. And I would like to talk a little accomplishments in the contributions to water. So, um, Steve has been a member of WEF and Central States Water Environment Association since 1988. He has held positions as a wastewater operations specialist with a consulting firm in northern Wisconsin, utility manager for a northern Wisconsin community, and environmental coordinator in the paper industry at facilities in both Wisconsin and Minnesota, and has held his current position for the city of Oshkosh as water and wastewater utility manager for the last 17 years. Steve is a member of the Wisconsin Section Operations Committee and was also active with the Operations Committee of the Minnesota Section while living in Minnesota. Steve graduated from Northland College in Ashland, Wisconsin with a BA in environmental studies. He followed these up with a master level studies in organizational management at Concordia University in St. Paul, Minnesota. He is a Wisconsin State Certified Operator in Water and Wastewater and holds a Class A Minnesota Wastewater Operator's License. And then I'd like to go over just real quickly some excerpts of the application packet that was submitted to the nomination committee at Central States. And this is from a fellow employee from the city of Oshkosh. Steve is a wealth of information. He is familiar with every aspect of water utilities, from the accounting aspect, organizational management, public construction, and operation. The quality that I believe his supervisors appreciate the most are his management and people skills. Like, once again, this is from a coworker of Steve's at the city. Steve is an effective communicator and is always willing to take the time necessary to make sure people are in a position to succeed, not to fail. This includes all of his employees, from supervisors down to new hires. He trusts his employees to make the right decision and is not a micromanager. Because he realizes when people are allowed to make decisions and take ownership, that they are much more productive. So I think that says a lot about Steve's character. On a personal note, I've known Steve for 15, 18 years in the organization. And I've worked with Steve on the Operations Committee in Wisconsin. And I've known Steve to have the highest integrity and and great dedication to the profession of clean water. At the city of Oshkosh, you have an excellent compliance record for your wastewater treatment facility. Every year, there's a DNR report called the Compliance Maintenance Annual Report. And many times, there's a perfect score of 4.0 on that report. Which really says a lot, given the constant state of construction at the wastewater plant and the ongoing upgrades. And also the fact that when you do get some wet weather, the flows at the wastewater plant can be up to 10 times the annual average daily flow. So with all that, I'm very happy to present this award to Steve and and just excited for Steve and his contributions and, uh, yeah, there's a picture of the award from the Water Environment Federation, so congratulations, Steve, great job.
Thank you very much, Dave. This recognition was a total surprise and I'm deeply honored to receive this award. I want to thank the membership of Central States for this honor. I hope that this really belongs to all of the with over the years. Utility staff, consultants, engineers, regulators, and educators, always ready to help each other with the common shared passion for protecting public health and the water environment. And I would also like to dedicate this to the memory of my wife Cindy, who in our 38 years together provided unwavering support through the job changes, the career moves, that allowed me to follow my passion for working with water. Thank you.
Well, congratulations, Mr. Brand.
Congratulations, Steve.
Absolutely, congratulations, way to do us proud.
Congrats, Steve.
Well, thank you again, and we will move on then to another presentation this evening by Information Technology Manager Tony Newman on improvements and new features to the city website. Tony, take it away.
All right, well, good evening. Let me bring up my browser quick. See if it's fully cooperating for me. Okay, as many of you know, we had sent out a survey to the council to try to identify and we worked in a lot of the new ideas that were offered. One of the most things that we did is install a web link in online documents. Once you go in
Tony, you're breaking up a little bit.
Yes.
Okay. My apologies. It's all the snow I'm getting up here. I gotta wait for the webpage to load. It's a little slower over WebEx than it is over this day's standard browser, so bear with me. I'm gonna turn the share off for a second because we, it's not loading over the WebEx session, my apologies.
Are you still with us, Tony?
I am, can you hear?
Yes.
Okay. And it'll load the page. But sharing the browser, it seems to want to stall out, my apologies. I'll try to share this over again. Never fails when you go to a demonstration, things don't exactly cooperate. Are you seeing webpage now?
No, we are not. We're getting the starting to share content.
Let me know when you see it actually on your screen, then I'll proceed. Are you seeing the webpage?
No, oh, there it is, now it is.
Okay, because there's significant delay on that. It's slowly loading up, Tony. Um, so I will move on. Um, as indicated, we're actually changed the verbiage to online documents. And then what we did is we created some targeted searches within web link so that when you want to search municipal codes, that is the only thing in search. When you want to search common council minutes or agendas, you can search only those minutes and agendas within the year you want to specify. To make that even easier, when you go to the council minutes and agendas, we actually added a hyperlink right to that refined search. Are you all seeing that okay?
Yes.
Okay. So when you are to, when you click on that custom search, what it will do is it will bring up an actual refined search for where you could put in your search term and if you want, specify the year you're looking for. What that will do is it will return only the items that you're looking for. Uh, the example I'll use, I know we just did the bicycle ordinance this year. So I'll put in bicycle in 2020 and submit. And we have instructions along the top. And then this will only search the year 2020 and only search for any any agenda items that actually have the word bicycle in them. And then, as it says top, if you click on the link, it will tell you over on the side where that item is located so you know what year and date you're looking at. So it's going to provide a lot more refined searchability and make things a little more user friendly for those that are trying to search for specific items.
Tony?
Yes.
Can you go back to that once?
Yes.
It's kind of hard to see on the shared screen, but did you say that a box to the right showed which council meeting that was referring to?
Yes. I'll do it again.
And then the other question is, will it search only the agenda cover pages or the entire agenda packets?
It will search, it'll search everything that was listed for the agenda. That's not just to cover all the attachments also. And yes, over here, hopefully you can see it on the right side, it'll give you the actual year, month, date, and agenda item.
I see.
You can see that okay?
Barely, but I I see most of it. Now, does this bring this up in like chronological order or what order are those results?
You can choose how to, right now it's sort of un-relevance, or you can sort it by date created.
Okay. That's pretty nifty.
Oh, and it's it's the feedback that the council gave us that certainly helped us gear these things through a premier fashion. I am trying to get my screen back to where it was.
Now, if you searched on the main page on our website?
Yes.
That search up there in the upper right, will it also go down into those agendas as well? Or do you have to specifically come to this page and use that search link for the council agendas?
You will need, this search up here is for site content, not the document index. The web link document repository has millions of documents in it. Those are not indexed in this search because that index would never end. Makes sense?
So if a if a citizen is looking for something, topically speaking, in those laser fish or the the document index, they have to go to the online documents there under services?
That is correct.
Okay.
And then that will bring them to the main web link landing page, which all the references to web link have been changed to online documents now. And then at the top of that, search common council meeting, which is the one you just saw. And then there's also search municipal code book, which will restrict your searching in the municipal codes to just the city bashback municipal codes. And you can do, you can be as broad or as narrow as you want because you can also specify a specific chapter or keep it broad or a combination of the two. Additionally, what we've done is we looked at our quick links and it was pointed out that, especially in the mobile presence, badges that are across the top of the website, when they were below the video, many people did not see they were even there to realize that they were present. So we did, we brought those up above the video so that they look a little more clear on the website. And then we also looked at the top hits on our analytics to determine whether the badges we have there were still appropriate. And we did drop one, being business, because it was a repetition of the menu at the top. And we added online payments. Because of the real estate we have in the website, we really can't go beyond the seven icons across when they when they responsibly rely on the mobile platform. If we go beyond that, we start to lose some of those diagnostics.
Okay, your audio is getting a little underwater. But if you go to the Parks Department badge right there and you're on a mobile device?
Yes.
It cuts off the left side of the page. I don't know if you're aware of that or not.
Um, I would say that would have to depend on the size of the mobile device because we do test it on mostly standard sizes. So if it's cutting off, we definitely need to take a look at that and see at what size it's actually cutting out.
Because if I go to the fire department one, it's, um, it's fine. Or even property information. It's only parks.
I guess it has to do with, I'm guessing it has to do with that video that's on the far right. The department director welcome video. So we'll take a look at that and resolve it.
And do you know if parks will be adding that map soon or a listing of our parks on that landing page?
I believe they already have their parks.
No, not if you go, not if you go to the Parks Department badge there, they don't.
So you want a full inventory of the parks.
Yeah, I think that that input was given a while back, but I I know that a number of folks coming to either visit or even, you know, new residents and that have asked for that.
Is this one you're referring to, the interactive map?
Just a listing of our parks and a, and a, you know, location of where they are.
Okay. I know they did the interactive map a little out. Full listing also. And then additionally, on the on the contact
Yeah, your your audio is completely cutting out.
Yeah, we're losing you, Tony. Was that better?
Yes.
Okay, that's, I can't go to the homepage anymore because when it tries to load the video banner, it's taking up all my audio. So I'll stay off the homepage. As I was saying, on the contacts, one of the things that has been an ongoing struggle was the email versus contact form debacle. So what we did is we actually incorporated both concepts. The contact forms are still listed under the individuals, but we added a column with all the email contacts. So that you can now contact staff directly via email. We did the same thing on common council. Whereas you could still contact through the contact form, but you also now have the ability to contact via email. And then the other thing that we had been discussing was this contact form. Some end users did not know whether their form went through or not. And we actually added a dialog box that will indicate success or failure when a form is submitted. So when they submit a form, it goes through without any error. Uh, it will give them a a successful sending dialog box. And if it fails, it will tell them very clearly that there was a failure in submitting their contact form. And then, excuse me?
Yes, that's very helpful. I know folks have sent multiples in the past because they weren't sure if they went through. So I'm sure people will appreciate that.
Excellent. And then one of the last things that we did is we actually created a URL for a a website, OshkoshBillPay.com, which takes you to all this or all the things that you could pay online. So now we can market a much smaller URL and be able to get people in one stop shop to go and find what they want to pay and how to pay it. So now they can conveniently go to OshkoshBillPay.com and it takes you right to the online payment portal.
Can they find that in the regular search, Tony?
No, we didn't put it in the search because it was a way to try to get them to get to this page without having to remember www.ski.oshkosh.us. So because it's a domain that references this specific page, it's not actually in the website. Does that make sense?
Yes.
We will slowly transition bill stubs and things. Instead of having long URLs that reference all the way to the utility billing form website, we will just narrow it down to OshkoshBillPay.com and get everyone on every bill stub in the same spot.
And I think that was something that Councilmembers Erickson and Ford had mentioned when they they met with you on some of these ideas, if I'm, if I recall what you had said.
Yes, I will put full credit to this one too, I've helped over four, it was a fantastic idea.
But as I understand it, are they still not able to pay their taxes online?
Well, once the tax bills have been produced, they could pay taxes online.
Okay, oh, I see, yeah, there it is. Personal property tax and real estate tax.
Oh, yes, absolutely. On on the citizen self-service, those payment options are turned off until we actually produce the bills. Because there is that period where we stop collecting, we turn the payout table to the county and we no longer accept payments. Once we issue the new tax bills, we turn that option back on.
So that website again was OshkoshBillPay.com?
That is correct.
So we'll have to do some education to get that out there since it can't be retrieved by the search, right?
Correct. Because again, that's really meant to get on literature, bill stubs and things like that so that they have a simpler URL to type in to go pay their bill.
And Tony, this is Mike Ford here, and that URL directs people to the the site on or to the specific page on our city website where they pay their bills. So folks will still be able to search within the website, our city website, and find that landing page. It just wouldn't take them to the page that redirects them there, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Any questions? Or anything, primarily, Mike and Lindsay, anything that I missed?
I don't think so. I just want to say thank you again for being open to feedback. And I think the changes really make it more user-friendly for folks, so thank you.
Yeah, I was just gonna add, based on the conversations I had with different folks, that we still have some work to do with uh, we still have some work to do with things like contracts because they're all in one area. And getting them sorted by department and function and things like that is something that uh, we're going to be working on, uh, in the coming year. So there's improvements that we can, we can still make. This is an ongoing thing and I appreciate all the comments and keep them coming because that's, that's the best way to, uh, to keep working on these things. So appreciate all the feedback we got and then we'll continue to do this.
Yes, well, to Mark's point, while we did the survey, we will accept feedback at any time and always try to improve uh, what we're serving up.
Wonderful. Thank you so much for, for putting that together and thank you to the council members for giving that feedback. All right then, are there any other questions? It doesn't appear to be. Then we will move on to public comment on agenda items. Uh, first I'd like to ask the clerk if there's anyone registered or who has joined us um, for public comment on agenda items.
We have no one registered for citizen statements.
All right, and then I would like to make note uh, that we did have an email requesting comment on an agenda item. However, it's on an agenda item that is for city manager and council discussion. Terry Rushing sent an email regarding item 22, the COVID update. Um, referencing a city mask ordinance, which is not on the agenda for discussion. But all council members received a copy as did, I believe, the city manager. And then we will, um, do we have, I'm sorry, I skipped over citizen statements, Pam. Did we have anyone uh, registered for citizen statements?
We did not have anybody registered.
Thank you. So moving on to consent agenda items.
Yes, we have people for public comment on agenda items.
That's what I, that's what I asked. We do have someone for public comment on agenda items?
Right, we just had nobody for citizen statements to counsel.
All right, I took that out of order. So who is registered to speak first, Pam?
I do not have anybody registered.
Oh, okay. I, I thought you had some people. I'm sorry.
That's okay. Thank you.
All right then. On consent agenda, we'll take a motion in a second.
I'm moved.
Second.
Bob Heschel and Mike Ford was the second? No? Matt? Okay. Discussion. Uh, seeing none, let's take the role on consent agenda.
Ford.
Aye.
Allison Aspie.
Aye.
Rosie.
Aye.
Mugerower.
Aye.
Erickson.
Aye.
Heschel. Omari.
Aye.
Great seven.
And we have one pending ordinance this evening. Ordinance 20 dash 459, amend ordinance pertaining to enforcement of parking restrictions. We'll take a motion and a second on 20 dash 459.
So moved.
Deb Allison Aspie. And second.
Second.
Councilmember Erickson. Discussion. All right, please take the role on the amended ordinance.
Ford.
Aye.
Allison Aspie.
Unmute.
It's a double muted.
Rosie.
Aye.
Mugerower.
Aye.
Erickson.
Aye.
Heschel.
Aye.
Omari.
Aye.
Great seven.
All right, we have one new ordinance this evening. Uh, there will be no action on this item. And that's ordinance 20 dash 460 regarding cancellation of the December 22nd council meeting. And we have several new resolutions this evening. The first one being, uh, resolution 20 dash 461. Approved conditional use permit for a non-residential accessory structure exceeding 10,000 square feet at 2676 South Oakwood Road. Plan Commission recommends approval. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Councilmember Mugerower, seconded by Ford. Discussion. Is Mr. Davis here?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Davis, would you just kind of explain a little bit about what this, um, structure is?
Yes, this, uh, structure is in the rear of the main building on Oakwood. This will be a storage structure, uh, behind the parking lot, some outdoor storage. Uh, it's a conditional use permit because it exceeds 10,000 square feet. Uh, should not be visible from, uh, the public right of way very much at all.
Were there any concerns with the amount of impervious surface area here?
Uh, this particular property was combined with a large parcel they purchased from the city a year or so ago. So there is a lot of green space on this parcel now. Uh, and the stormwater management has all been, uh, calculated, uh, earlier when they did, uh, um, parking lot improvements.
All right then, thank you. Further discussion on this item? Please take the role.
Ford.
Aye.
Allison Aspie.
Aye.
Rosie.
Aye.
Mugerower.
Aye.
Erickson.
Aye.
Heschel.
Aye.
Omari.
Aye.
Great seven.
Next we have resolution 20 dash 462. Approved general development plan and specific implementation plan for multifamily development located at 4200 block of State Highway 91. And commission recommends approval. We have a motion?
We're moved.
Second.
For Ford, seconded by Mugerower. Discussion. Councilmember Ford.
Yeah, I just really quick wanted to mention that at, uh, when we reviewed this at Plan Commission, it was brought up that this was a particularly challenging site and that, uh, both city staff and the applicant worked pretty hard to make this work. So I just want to commend all parties for that.
Thank you. Other discussion? Please take the role on 462.
Ford.
Yep.
Aye.
Allison Aspie.
Aye.
Rosie.
Aye.
Mugerower.
Aye.
Erickson.
Aye.
Heschel.
Aye.
Omari.
Aye.
Great seven.
All right, next is 20 dash 463. Approved great neighborhoods capital improvement program funding in the amount of $25,000. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
So moved.
Discussion. All right, please take the role on 463.
Ford.
Aye.
Allison Aspie.
Aye.
Rosie.
Aye.
Mugerower.
Aye.
Erickson.
Aye.
Heschel.
Aye.
Omari.
Aye.
Great seven.
And the next item or the last of the new resolutions, 20 dash 464. Approved budget amendment in fund transfer. Approved spotlight designation. Authorized redevelopment authority to acquire 413 Scott Avenue, $12,000. Do we have a motion?
I'm moved.
Council, councilmember Erickson.
Second.
And councilmember Heschel. Any discussion on 464? All right, please take the role.
Ford.
Aye.
Allison Aspie.
Aye.
Rosie.
Aye.
Mugerower.
Aye.
Erickson.
Aye.
Heschel.
Aye.
Omari.
Aye.
Great seven.
And we have a couple of things on council discussion and direction to city manager future agenda items. Under future agenda items, uh, closed session for the city manager's review, November 30th at 5:30 PM. Is there anything else on that? Just an announcement then. Uh, the presentation, I'm sorry.
Madam Mayor, sorry, uh, just so, appreciate it, thank you. Just so, um, if Deputy Mayor Crowsey wants to confirm for the city manager, we expect his attendance, uh, probably during that meeting as well, um, just so he can plan appropriately. I think that was our last intention. Is that correct?
Yeah, that was explained to him, yeah.
Oh, perfect, thank you.
We'll meet privately first and then we'll call Mr. Roloff in. Thank you.
All right, very good. And we also have on December 8th, a presentation, uh, by Public Health on the overdose fatality review team report. Is that at the beginning of our meeting in the normal presentation slot, city manager?
That would be the plan, yeah, right at the beginning.
Okay. Uh, do you know if we'll be receiving a copy of that report ahead of time with the agenda?
I did not arrange this, so I'm going to put that probably back on councilmember Erickson, so, uh, I'm not sure what the answer is to that.
Yeah, I can touch base with them and, um, they have the reports ready, so I'm sure they'll get it to us before then.
Okay, great. That'd be a, a good opportunity in case we have any questions to, to see that ahead of time. And then the Jackson Street corridor and safety study also on December 8th. And then councilmember Mugerower, you had, uh, an item for student busing agreement with Ashkosh area school district.
Yes, I did. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, you know, earlier in this year, we, uh, council approved and went into an agreement with the Ashkosh area school district to, um, provide some busing via Go Transit for students in the, in the school district in the city of Ashkosh. And obviously 2020 has been an interesting year and in multiple ways, uh, COVID has thrown us for a loop. And the original intent of our agreement isn't going to be met, I think. So, and, and I'll, I'll explain a little bit more on, on why I think that. You know, the original intent was to, originally when it was drawn up, it was potentially be a three-year agreement with the school district. Um, kind of a pilot program to help them determine then if, if they have the, uh, need and the ability to continue to um, have a, a busing agreement with us for their students, uh, after year three. Council, um, made an amendment, changed that to a two-year. And now we're, we're more than six months into this thing and, uh, it's obvious that, you know, year one is going to be a loss in terms of being able to figure out if it was a, if it's a viable program, if it helps students. Um, if we have our numbers right, all those things, year one is, is going to be a loss, a lost year in terms of data gathering. And so I approached city manager Roloff and had a, had a discussion with him in terms of um, what options are available to us to, to add a third year to this agreement to ensure that our original intent is met, that, that we're going to try and make sure the kids have the ability to get to school. And that the school district has the ability to use some good data and some good information to make a, a long-term decision for themselves after the contract's over. I know he, he met with, uh, finance director Van Gompo and transportation director, um, Collins and, and discussed options available to us. And, um, I'm happy that, that Mark was able to, to bring me back an option or, and, and start a, a conversation on options available to us to try to, to try to do. So, um, what I'd like to do is for us to have a discussion now and to give Mark, excuse me, city manager Roloff, direction tonight for him to go back and potentially, um, I guess I'll use the word renegotiate or add a third year to our agreement. We have some, some CARES Act money that's designated specifically for transit, uh, usage. And, um, it's been presented that we can use a bit of that, a small amount of that to help add a third year to our agreement. Um, covering our side, uh, the school district would still be, uh, fully, um, fully expensed or fully billed for a, a full year. I think it's 33.5, if I'm correct, Mark, um, for their.
They've already paid that.
They've paid it for 2020 calendar year. We would add on, uh, a third year and they would pay that full amount in the third year. Um, but we can do this also by not having the private sector, because remember, we also asked the private sector to pony up 30 grand every year towards this as well. So for the full, you know, 93.5 every year. We believe we can use, uh, about 60,000 in, uh, transit funds under CARES Act that would help offset our revenue losses this year. We were already going to have a massive revenue loss in transit with, with what's happened over the last eight months. Um, and this is an appropriate use of those funds to, to help offset that loss. And by doing so, we can add a third year with, actually without adding any budgetary dollars for us, uh, or asking anything more from the private sector than, than we had already asked. Um, city manager Roloff, do you want to clarify anything I missed or jump in with any, any clarifying things before, I guess, council talks a little bit?
When, when, I guess, thank you, councilmember Mugerower. When, when councilmember Mugerower approached me with this, you know, I, uh, I was a little hesitant because, you know, we've been putting a substantial amount forward and I was concerned and councilmembers knew about that. But I, I tried to keep an open mind and one of the things that when we went back to staff, if we didn't have this agreement with the school district and we were in the situation we're in now, um, we would, we're projecting that we'll get about 30% of what we normally get for our ridership. So we would have had to come up with that, that loss. We would have, we would have lost that money anyway. So by, uh, by using the CARES Act money to backfill what the private sector and we would have done, the school district will get a third year. Uh, they weren't originally going to get a third year. So they would pay that, but we would have ended up, uh, losing, you know, we, people wouldn't have been riding the bus. They wouldn't have been paying for the bus. So the CARES Act money can make up for that. And then that slides everything into years two and three. Um, Frank, it'll give the group a extra year to do the fundraising because the monies we've already received from the private sector would be applied to the following school year, not to this school year. And that gives that group another full year to do the final year of fundraising for the third year. So there's a few wins that, you know, what, what saves it is the CARES money. And it's totally appropriate for use of the CARES transit money. Uh, Mr. Collins and I, Mr. Van Gompo and I, we, we discussed this. So there's some possibilities here. So I think we've got the makings of something. Sounds like I did not talk to superintendent Cartwright specifically about this, but I think councilmember Mugerower may have. So he, he has more insight on that than I do.
Yep, and I can touch on that before, I guess, we, we have a discussion, but I did, uh, I did not step out of line in terms of getting ahead of council's, uh, direction, but I did appro, uh, approach, um, superintendent Cartwright just in terms of if we had the ability to do so, would there be interest from their side? Um, I know that she talked, uh, or it was presented at their finance committee in terms of, is that something they'd be interested in? And I think after we, if we give clear direction tonight, um, their board then would have, um, a full discussion on that topic at their next regularly scheduled meeting, uh, following. So, um, I guess any questions on, on it or anything else I can help explain in terms of, of what we're, what I'm hoping we can get behind?
Well, we do have, um, a tentative scheduling for a joint workshop with the school dis, district coming up in the beginning of the year. But one of the things that I think council needs to be aware of is that, you know, once we have the new census data, this could, uh, we could. is that, you know, once we have the new census data, this could, we could be looking at some other issues related to valley transit and, and go transit. And I'm wondering if this might be better addressed at that joint meeting. Although I, I do appreciate you taking the initiative and being eager to get ahead of this. But I'm wondering if decisions get made before we know the outcome of that, if it could be a potential maybe decision too soon. And I don't know if Mr. Collins is on here or not, Mr. Roloff, maybe.
No, Mr. Collins is not on, but you know, we've discussed this. Those issues regarding future transit funding are issues that are, we're going to be faced with regardless of what we do with this. And it will likely be in, probably with the lateness of the census, that it's probably not going to be until 22. That'll be during the life of this agreement, but it's, we, we're going to have that issue no matter what. So I mean, I can follow if council wants to wait. There's no urgency to do this because we are in the middle of the first year. We've technically already received all the funds. Whether we keep the current agreement or change to a different agreement, we've already got our funds available. So there's not an urgency to do it, but it sounded like from what Councilmember Mugerower said, there, there was at least an interest in it. I can certainly sit down with Superintendent Cartwright if that's the council's wish.
And essentially then this isn't really making it three years because this is, this first year is somewhat lost, right? It basically restores the two years. If, that's assuming that students will be back in person after, after the new year.
But how, I mean, the school district has already paid the this year's contribution and we would expect them to do a three-year. Had the council originally approved a three-year agreement, they would have paid 33,500 for all three years. So we're not changing the school district's responsibility. What we're doing is we're applying CARES money to, to extend it for another full year. That's probably the, the biggest, that's what makes this happen. Because if we didn't have CARES Act money, I wouldn't have been so receptive to Councilmember Mugerower's idea, to be brutally honest. Like, I don't think we could have. This gives us that capability and it also buys time. I, I do like the, I know it was, it's difficult to do fundraising right now. The timing with COVID was just not good. I know there were businesses and groups that wanted to help, but they were very skittish. This buys another year. There'll be more certainty. So I, I think the fundraising and Mr. Peschel, that's, that was part of the thing you were doing. I would think that, that extra year is going to make a, make a difference for the fundraising effort.
Yes, I'd like to thank Councilmember Peschel for working on that, that private component. Councilmember Ford.
Yeah, no, I think this makes perfect sense. It seems to be, I wasn't here when it was originally approved, but this seems totally consistent with the intent of what was approved by the council for it to be an active agreement for two years. And we did lose this first year and it seems to be totally consistent with what the CARES Act money is for. So I think that's, makes sense to use it for what it's for. So yep, all for it.
Councilmember Peschel.
Sure. So I just want to make sure that I'm, that I'm understanding everything correctly. So what's, what's the amount of CARES Act funding that's going to be attributed to this year's, for 2020's transit, student transit busing?
So, and Bob, we're going to, I think I'm going to have to ask you to eat your mic a, a little bit. I think you're a little muted there. But you're looking for an answer on what we would be applying for CARES Act. It'd be 60,000. So basically it would be covering our original 30 that we would have budgeted for this year as well as 30 for the private donation side. So 60,000 of that. And it just moves, it's, it's an accounting function after that, that it moves what we had already allocated or what we already received down a year. So it pushes you out and as long as I got the floor just directing, responding to the mayor's question and timing of it. We have no idea when we're going to meet with the school district and in what function and what those topics are. But to move back, the, the biggest gain that we do by moving this and doing this early is that those fundraising efforts can get pushed back, can actually have longer. Instead of potentially looking to start fundraising in, in the first of the year with everything that is going on in the economy and the business world and, and private world, adding that an additional 12 months to that fundraising cycle is going to be a huge win or a huge, a huge plus. So.
So, city manager, is there a time requirement on these CARES Act dollars? Do we have to spend some of that by the end of the year too?
No, there's no CARES Act for transit is pretty.
Fluid.
Yeah, remember, we're looking at doing a, a transit center. It's going to be, yeah, this is going to be like a three-year process. So we're, we're okay in that regard. Again, that's, it's, we've, we've looked at that to make sure that we're okay. And both Mr. Collins and Mr. Van Gompo feel very comfortable that we're, we're within our parameters of the program.
Councilmember Allison Osby.
Mayor, so my, my, I, I guess I have a couple of comments and Mr. Mugerower and I did talk about this because obviously when this originally came up, there were some reservations that I had and it, it wasn't necessarily because that there wasn't a need within the community, but where the funding comes from. My only concern is it is quite a bit of money and we don't know, we don't know yet regarding the virus. Obviously we're extremely hopeful with the vaccines and the antibody cocktail that's coming out for mild and mild to moderate cases of COVID. So I hate to designate any money from the CARES Act when we don't exactly know how long this is going to last. But with that being said, I want to be fair and I very much agree that this year has not been the year to try to evaluate anything regarding ridership and those types of, of things in regards to the students in public transportation. So with that in mind, I understand where Mr. Mugerower is coming from. The only question that I do have, and I guess I would ask for when the time comes that we do have a joint workshop with the school district is, you know, to please have it on for the topics. Because at some point, if the data does indicate that there is a definite need, then I certainly would be very much interested in talking to Ms. Cartwright along with the school board in making sure that in the future, that, that, that the expense for transportation for students, which covers not just city of Oshkosh students, but all students in the district then is adequately covered by the other townships and they are able to do that through their taxing entity. So that would be my request, but I understand where Mr. Mugerower is coming from. And so for that reason, I very much support it.
Councilmember Erickson. And then Deputy Mayor Crowsey after that.
Thank you. I'm also supportive of it. I think it makes a lot of sense to figure out how we can make this successful. I know even still with all of the, the changes this year, in October for Transit Advisory Board, we did receive an update on ridership for students. And despite, you know, the school district going virtual after two weeks, and they still had student ridership in September at 2,428 students. Written. So despite the thing that was still utilized, maybe not to the extent that it would have been without COVID. But I think it makes a lot of sense to extend it for a third year.
Deputy Mayor Crowsey.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to support it as well. We talked about having data to drive a future platform to runoff in the city. And one year won't obviously be enough. So I think we need the full two years as long as we can get back to school sooner than later.
All right. So you have your, what you need then, Mr. Roloff?
Yes, I do. Thank you. You know, we'll probably, it's, it's a fairly straightforward contract. So I'll, I've asked the city attorney to work on some stuff and we can start making its way through the process. So we'll be getting that back to you very shortly. Thank you for the direction.
All right. Very good. The next item is regarding a future workshop for, again, that joint workshop with the Oshkosh area school district, which of course this year, we have not had that opportunity to do as regularly. And so I believe Mr. Roloff indicated there were some dates in late January. Was it the 27th? Unmute, please.
I was clicking the other side of my computer to pull up that email. Yes, the three dates are dates that would be consistent with the school board hosting this time. That would be their regular school meeting dates, which would be January 27th, February 10th, and just give me a second, and February 24th. Those are the three dates that were, were tossed out for a start time of 5:00 PM. I think Mr. Peschel can kind of account for, or at least confirm this. The school board, because they are meeting over at Tipler, I believe, are doing very socially distant meetings in a, in a large gymnasium. So they're doing in-person meetings right now. And if that would, I think that would probably be the intent. Mr. Peschel, I don't know if you, if you could chime in on that.
Yes. So our, our large meetings right now as a, as a school board, we're meeting at, at the administration building, but that's in a very socially distanced way based on our current size for this type of meeting. We, we definitely would be moving over to Tipler in the gym where we've held other larger meetings that provided more socially, a more socially distanced atmosphere. So I think that's a, I can confirm that for sure, but I think that's a good leap to take on that. So.
I would just ask that if this is on a night where they have a school board meeting at 6:00 PM, that we have more than an hour, if, if we end up with several items on that agenda, I don't think an hour is quite enough for, for, especially since it's been so delayed.
I'll pass it on. I, I certainly understand that if it's been a long time. Thank you for that, that sharing that with me. That's a good idea.
And then.
That may change the date, but I think that that's, that may be appropriate.
And Councilmember Allison Osby touched on something earlier that I believe relates to a possible agenda item. We talked about revisiting since, I, I think it's come up in the budget two years in a row that I recall about the school resource officer payments. And when you mentioned Councilmember Allison Osby, the school busing, the transit piece covering students from the entire district, which includes outside the city limits. This also speaks to that for us to kind of, I, I believe have that conversation about the contributions from the school district.
It's probably the time and place to have a discussion about it.
And, and so other council members, and, and certainly the school district would let us know of items that they'd like to put on there as well, I'm assuming.
Yeah, that, that's how the school busing item got on the agenda. Yes, absolutely. So now it's our turn.
All right. Any other? Councilmember Ford.
So if we have agenda items, ideas for agenda items for that meeting, should we send them to the mayor, to the city manager?
To city manager.
Yeah, you can forward it to Diane. Diane collects those.
All right. Sounds good. Thank you.
Other questions or discussion on that item? Okay, we have one more under council discussion, the implementation of resolution 20-154. The question is, do staff implement or does council wish to extend the waiver of special assessment payments?
Madam Mayor, I put this item on the agenda. Staff and I were talking about the resolution that was adopted back in April where the council had deferred the 2019 special assessments that would have normally been billed in 2020. I would draw your attention on the agenda, in the agenda package to the second page of resolution 20-154. If you're navigating through the PDF document, it's page 131. And it basically says, be it further resolved, the Board of Public Works, that's me, city manager, is hereby directed for calendar year 2020 to hold the certification of final special assessment calculations to provide for invoicing and payment of the first installment of special assessments in calendar year 21. That means that those, the ones we normally, we normally do it, the project in year one and send out the notices and then subsequently bill in year two. The council directed, year one was 2019, don't do it in 20, move it to 2021. The council was silent on anything that we would be doing with the 2020 projects. And according to the council's policy, we would bill those in 2021. So I'm really making you aware of this situation because it was a long time ago and we were doing a lot of stuff when COVID got started. If the council is satisfied with what we're, what the council already approved, there's really nothing more than me just giving you the information. But I know there were some questions about, well, what about people who are getting billed for 2020 projects in 2021? Right now, we're going to send out the notices and do all that in 2021. So if you'd like that, we got to put it on a future agenda for you to look at. If you're comfortable with what you did back in April, no actions necessary. We're just going to do the 19 bills and process them next year. Does that make sense? I just wanted to make sure I, I framed it correctly for the council.
Council comments, discussion on that. Councilmember Ford.
Yes. So city manager Roloff, do we have an idea of the impact that's having on cash flows? I'm just curious what would be the financial impact if we were to extend that.
The major concern would be with cash flow and that I've asked Mr. Van Gompo to take a look at what doing another year of that would be. It's a minimum of $2 million that we hold in special assessments by delaying a year. Some of our more senior council members, sorry, Councilmember Allison Osby. You'll recall for a few years ago, we were having issues with processing these things. We were very far behind. And we had a, a negative cash balance of over $4 million in this fund. It was several years of back special assessments. Wasn't the residents' fault. It was internally. We improved some processes and got things going. So we've been catching up and actually we did some borrowing to, to get that fund back up. We're going to eat a minimum of $2 million. When I say eat, I got to be careful about that terminology. We're deferring receiving that money by one year already. If we do it another year, we're holding on another year with that, paying the debt on it, yet still not collecting the special assessments. And if we do it, if we do it for the 2020 projects, you're adding at least another $2 million. And I would say with SNL and ORACON, we're probably looking three to three and a half million dollars. And I'm just ballparking it. That's why I asked Mr. Van Gompo to, to, to do a closer analysis. I don't have that information for you now. If we put it on an agenda, I would have that information for you at the, at the time you consider it.
Councilmember Allison Osby and then, I'm sorry, Councilmember Ford, you wanted to follow up?
Yes, I was just going to say thank you, Mark. It's, it's helpful. Very good information.
Councilmember Allison Osby. Unmute, please.
Michael asked the question of Mr. Roloff that I had. This is something that I think we need more information on. It's very difficult to answer tonight because. back in the day, and I think, uh, Mr. Peschel was a part of, part of that as well, back then when we were, we had the deficit. So the hard part is, is when you're talking $2 million, um, each year. The decision, the one that I want to make is, yeah, we'll, we'll extend it. Um, so it's hard because there's the immediate emotional reaction. Um, but then do we do something right now that feels good right now, but then only comes back to bite us, our citizens in the end, um, down the road? So if Mr. Van Gompo could, could maybe perhaps at the next council meeting, provide us with more financial information, I think that would be easier for the council to, um, decide. I think either way, if, if I'm worried about the long-term consequences of not doing it, but I also, um, I also worry about our citizens and our businesses as well.
And also, you know, in that discussion, city manager and I talked about this too. What would it look like in that context to also discuss? If, you know, for example, if we were not going to delay another year, what would it look like for council to have a discussion in that same vein about when folks put the special assessments, um, payments through the city, a potential change in the interest rate? And I don't know if city manager would like to, um, talk about that now, or do we put that all collectively uh, on that future agenda item?
Now, we're probably walking into other territory, but, uh, who has appeared on the screen but Mr. Van Gompo? I'm probably going to defer to our finance director on this.
Mr. City Manager and Mayor and Council, um, as finance director, I think, um, I need to complete, uh, the analysis on what this means for the city. Um, right off hand, um, it makes things more difficult. Um, as we were planning on our debt issuance in 2021, uh, we were hoping that we didn't have to issue any more debt to kind of finance, uh, special assessments. Uh, but this kind of changes that particular plan and where we're at. And in regards to this special assessment interest rate, uh, the Long Range Finance Committee is uh, taking that under consideration and will be discussing it at its meeting on December 2nd.
And will there also be a further discussion coming soon for the replacement of the special assessments? I don't know if, if Councilmember Mugrow or, or Mr. Van Gompo, someone would like to weigh in on when we might pick that discussion back up?
I, I can, uh, Mr. City Manager, if you don't mind, I can jump in and, and start. Um, we've, staff has had the discussion of bringing this forward at your next city council meeting. So we're working on, uh, some, uh, documentation and suggestions for you to consider on December 8th.
Excellent. Okay, so then, do you need anything else on that?
No, I think what I, what I heard from several council members, and I think it was that you need a little more information, you know, I wouldn't use those, I said off the cuff, I literally meant off the cuff. Russ wants to do more analysis. I think we owe that to the council. Um, so we'll bring it back, but not necessarily as an action item, but certainly as a, uh, informational item to help council, uh, make a decision on this. So, thank you.
Mr. Van Gompo?
Uh, yeah, with all due respect, I, I think we need a little bit more time than December 8th. Um, because we have a, a lot of items that, that we're working on right now. And there's, there's also this matter of trying to get our tax bills out. So if we could do, uh, something right early in the first of the year in January, that would be beneficial for my staff and myself.
Does that work for everyone? I think it's going to have to work for everyone.
Tax bill's out, Ross.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's kind of important.
Kind of important. I'm, I'm satisfied where we're at, Madam Mayor, and that we can, uh, you know, with the revised, with the revised date to give, uh, finance staff a little more time to take a look at this, that'd be good.
Very good. Thank you. All right. Uh, so next, uh, we have council member announcements and statements, a report on council liaison for boards and commissions. Uh, I just have two, uh, for the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee. Uh, they did, uh, review and have a draft mission statement, uh, that they're working on finalizing. And, uh, there was a presentation by NAMI, the National Alliance for Mental Illness. Um, so they're starting to, uh, you know, broaden some of those, that community outreach. And, uh, also for the redevelopment authority, in addition to that spotlight item that was on the agenda earlier, uh, there was a budget reviewed for the RDA along with the, um, update on the request for proposals for the community gardens. And, uh, that's been revised to have, uh, several date, uh, I guess deadlines, if you will. And just for the public's information, there are five parcels that, um, Brian Wussman from Economic Development, you can make contact with if you have an interest, your group has an interest in any of those, uh, five parcels to submit a proposal to, uh, the redevelopment authority for community gardens. Other council member liaison reports. Councilmember Erickson?
Thank you. I just have one, uh, Transit Advisory Board met last week, um, and we received a presentation uh, from the consultants that were hired, um, to do the go-transit site selection study. So they had been doing some stakeholder input sessions, uh, the last two weeks. And, um, we, they also took input from Transit Advisory Board. So this study is looking at long-term needs for the downtown transit center on Pearl Avenue. Um, and looking at kind of how can, uh, we accommodate go-transit's growth and also some downtown redevelopment. So looking at types of mixed uses, partnerships and locations. So, uh, we looked at a few different conceptual designs. Um, so kind of just stay tuned for the, um, study that will likely come out, I think in the next few months.
All right. Other boards and commission liaison reports. Councilmember Peschel?
Sure. Um, I had a couple, uh, the, the Sustainability Advisory Board, uh, met earlier this month. Um, we discussed a couple of things that'll, are going to be slowly kind of making their way to the council. One is that there's, uh, they're working on an urban duck ordinance in regards to having, uh, similar to, uh, urban chickens. Uh, people may be able to.
Not turkeys?
Not turkeys.
Okay.
Maybe. So, um, so that's, uh, so they're working on that. It'll mirror, uh, for the most part, it'll, it'll mirror appropriately, uh, the chicken ordinance, just as it would relate to ducks, uh, in, in, in the sense that they are different animals, different uh, environmental needs and, and such too. Uh, but, um, but it'll, it'll mirror, uh, the constructs of the, of the chicken ordinance. Um, the, uh, board has been working diligently for a couple of meetings on, um, a divestment, uh, resolution uh, that, uh, is based in the, the sustainability plan of creating, um, a path to divesting from fossil fuels uh, within, uh, the city of Oshkosh. Um, and so that's gonna, uh, it's gonna work its way to through that committee one more month, and then it's going to send, uh, that resolution to the Long Range Finance Committee uh, to discuss any implications or any implementations that, uh, may come from that. So, um, there has been, uh, a conversation about community composting going on, um, related to uh, partnerships within the university and, uh, that they have with their own facilities and utilizing composting that way. Um, I have to give a little, uh, kudos to, uh, Mr. Mugrow, because after one of our budget workshops, uh, in one of our budget workshops, he brought up community composting and reminded us of the, um, the students that came to our, to our committee meeting, or to our council meeting over a year ago. Um, and so we brought that up as, you know, is there a potential that, you know, that we could create, um, a more community-based composting program in the community? Maybe figure out a way to model it off of the stormwater credit program that was created uh, for the, um, for the rain gardens and such like that, and the rain barrels and everything. So, uh, we've moved forward with that. I'm actually going to be heading that up, um, connecting with those students again, taking in their input. Um, and, uh, seeing if there's anything that can come from that. So that's, uh, SAB. Um, Bike and Ped met, uh, last week. Uh, their main topic of conversation was the Jackson Street Corridor Plan. Um, and they're going to send a, a note to you and when that comes to the council, uh, indicating that they were in support of, um, option 2A. Uh, and, uh, and, uh, and some other comments that, uh, that they wanted you to know and how that might support or improve bicycle and pedestrian, uh, transportation in that area. Um, I think that's all I have right now. So, thank you.
Councilmember Ford?
Yes, Plan Commission met, and we, uh, approved, uh, some of the items that we already approved, uh, tonight as a council. But we also approved the Envision North Jackson Plan, which is a, uh, planning document laying out, um, the city's goals for Jackson Street north of Murdoch to, um, I-41. And it was, uh, very, very well done. We're looking forward to seeing it implemented.
Councilmember Peschel?
Sure. I, I knew I was forgetting something. So back to the bike and ped plan. Uh, one of the other things that we discussed was this, uh, bicycle and pedestrian kind of route around this, around the city's five bridges. Um, and creating kind of a branded route that, that people could, um, you know, walk or ride their bikes on. Um, and, and use that as a, as a marketing tool to, uh, encourage people to come to Oshkosh to, to use that path. Um, and to, uh, you know, and for, you know, citizens to understand that, that there's, you know, a marketed path within the city of Osh, or a branded path within that. They, um, the five, it's kind of right now called the Five Bridges, uh, Route. Um, but the, the committee is kind of soliciting the opinion of, of members of, of the committee. And, and if the council wanted to weigh in, there is, there is discussion about naming each route in between each bridge so that there may be a specific name throughout that. Uh, but also just discussion about whether we should just go with a name like Brand, like, uh, like the Five Bridges Route. So, um, if anyone's interested in, you know, providing any input on that, um, I would just, uh, provide your input to, uh, to Alexa, or you can provide it to me and I'll, I, I can bring it up at the next meeting as well. So, um, but yeah, thank you again.
All right. Anything from traffic?
No, I reported two weeks ago.
Oh, that's right. That's right. Although there is still an open, uh, seat on traffic too, just for folks. Mr. Mugrow, did, uh, Long Range Finance meet since we last had a council meeting?
No, we did not. I have nothing to, uh, nothing to report tonight.
Okay. All right. All right. So we are now at city manager announcements and statements.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. A couple of items in the agenda packet for you. The, uh, uh, memo from, uh, from me regarding, uh, retention of AECOM to do our uh, stormwater management assistance for the 2021 calendar year. Uh, the title says 2020, uh, 2021. That's on-call things that, uh, we may need done in AECOM's local company, local, uh, office and everything. So we've typically done that for our compliance with our, uh, MS4 permit. Um, happy to, have, happy to answer any questions you may have about that. Um, I have the, uh, status of outstanding issues. I don't have a lot to report on this, but the one I would draw your attention to because it's, uh, it's been in there for a while. But review of fee of, of fees and charges. Uh, our strategic plans specifically reference, uh, reviewing fees uh, on an ongoing basis. Uh, as Mr. Van Gompo pointed out, we have, uh, you know, a lot of things going on in December. So we're going to begin to give you the first of fee schedule changes, uh, at the December 8th meeting. I expect that we'll probably spend a couple, uh, three council meetings providing updates. We're going to try to do it as functionally as possible, so by department, so that we sit down and finance goes through it with each department to make sure they're, they're prepared and have all their methodologies adopted and, and reviewed and whatnot. So, um, but they've been working on this for some time and I think they're, they're ready to go. But we're going to, we're going to bring it to council, um, in somewhat of a, you know, piecemeal, but organized piecemeal fashion for your consideration. So, uh, start looking for that on the next, uh, council agenda.
City Manager, along those lines on that review, can I ask, um, because we've been getting, uh, just a, a few emails here recently, um, with concerns about what fees are listed on our website for permits and such? And what actually gets charged? Is that review also looking at how we communicate those fees or just the dollar amounts?
It's just the dollar amount, but when we sit down with somebody that gets a building permit, um, you know, we explain and we try to get information. Um, I think the couple of instances that you've seen are people who started a project without a permit and then they claim they didn't know they needed a permit.
Yeah, yeah.
I question that veracity. Um, and then at times there are people who think, well, this is just a, um, a remodeling. And remodelings typically have a lesser fee than a, a full, um, uh, rehabilitation, uh, full, uh, rebuild. And what one person views as just a remodeling versus what other people view, we have a, we have a specific, uh, uh, schedule and specific criteria that drives that threshold. So I think some of those cases are, uh, people not, uh, uh, underestimating the level of work that they're doing. Um, we have a lot of people right now. Um, one of the weird, uh, developments with COVID is we have a lot of building activity.
A lot of DIY stuff too, right?
Yeah, and that's part of, I don't think the ones that you saw though, I, I don't think they were necessarily DIYs. With, when it's a do-it-yourselfer, I see those, uh, people not, you know, the first time they've ever done something like this. So they don't necessarily know. They may or may not need a permit. They may or may not call us. Um, but when it's a contractor and particularly maybe a contractor that's from out of the area, uh, they don't know the territory, uh, and they start work and the, different communities have different rules. One was roofing issue and the person claimed, well, nobody does roofing, uh, permit. Some do, some don't. Some do it based on a threshold. There are different standards that are adopted. It is not uniform from community to, community to community. So, um, communicating that is necessary. But if people don't come in or people don't make an appointment or call, and right now we're closed, so we do rely on phone calls. But, uh, when they start work and don't talk to us, they've lost a little bit of credibility, uh, when they do that.
Yes. So that's a, a good reminder for everyone. If you're in the, this season of remodeling, repairs, rehabbing, remember to get those permits. And if in doubt, just, you know, what is it? Measure twice, cut once? Well, measure twice and call permitting twice just to make sure. Um, all right. Thank you.
Sit with Mayor, if, if I could, because I, I appreciate you bringing this up. One statistic that I am particularly proud of with building inspections, and I want to contrast this. I know Mr. Peschel and Mrs. Allison Osby will remember this. When, when I took over building inspections, when you walked in to get a building permit, the chances of you getting a building permit on your first visit was about one in three, 33%. I think it was maybe 35%. Mr. Zerotti took over, did a lot of process improvement. We are now issuing building permits on your first visit. Residential building permits, 90% of the time. 90% of the time. So all, to your point, all you gotta do is call us. Please call us. We have, we have a building inspector there all day. We just, part of the day, one building inspector is there for half a day so that they can take all that walking stuff and they're taking calls and stuff like that. So please call us, please. We're happy to help.
And are they able to just apply online for a permit?
Yes, they can.
Mr. Van Gompel wants to speak.
Yeah, go ahead, Russ.
I guess I just wanted to share, and Tony did a good job with updates on the website. But if you go to the website, the mayor was talking about the search bar, very, at the very top, there's some tabs, not the buttons, but the tabs on top. There's a tab for online services. If you click that, you get a menu and it has all of the different online services, including the fees. So if you go into inspections, you can see that. If you go into planning, utility billing, public works, they're all there for you to take a look at. So that's kind of where you can direct people to.
I don't know if you can see this. I don't think so, but basically there's the whole list of all the online permitting through the inspections department. All right. Is that, is that all with outstanding issues? Looks like there's some follow-up on the transitional housing coming up in, in the near future.
Yeah, let me get back to my, okay. Transitional housing, you know, staff is working on evaluating different ordinances. I want to make sure that we've got full research done for you. I don't anticipate any, any application. I've gotten no indication from the state that they would be providing a, submitting anything anytime in the near future. And normally there's a process that they go through. I haven't seen that process even start. So I know that's a concern and I think the residents were, look, we know we're probably going to have this one there for the duration, but if we're going to have more of these elsewhere in town, they would like to see more, more review of those and some stricter zoning guidelines. So that's what staff's looking at. We've had a few COVID-related absences, I'll say, so it's been a little tougher, but we're continuing to work on it and do that, that research.
City Manager, I know that, you know, this was on the outstanding issues as it relates to the TLPs through the DOC, but recently the Winnebago County Board asked council to allow a second Chapter 980 into a location. And at their most recent county board meeting, there was urgent concern about a number of folks that they would be required to set up housing coming up in the new year. And they said they were working on a plan. So my question is, do we have that conversation jointly on the TLP and the 980s or just keep them bifurcated?
I, I think they should stay bifurcated. Thank you for asking. I don't know if Mr. Davis or Mr. Lyons have anything more with that, but those 980s, those are the worst of the worst. And what the location that the county has identified is probably as good as you're going to see for the obligation that the county has, but they must locate these folks. So they're doing them literally next to the landfill. That's much different than the transitional housing on Jefferson Street. Two different groups of people doing it. If my, if, if, I want to either have Mr. Davis or Mr. Lyons confirm that for me. The people that you've dealt with, with the 980 applications through the county are different than the TLP, the transitional housing folks on Jefferson. Would you say that's correct?
Yeah, Mark Lyons here. I would say that's definitely correct. They're typically and traditionally handled separately through land use and zone. And just because the state law gets a lot more specific and starts to talk about different things with the 980, and I lean, could probably chime in if we need to on that, but the 980 have some regulations that have to be followed through the state where the transitional living, the TLPs is something that is a little easier for us to look at.
And so I would keep them separated. Short answer, I would keep them separated. So we're still working on those and Mr. Lyons is the one who's looking at the, at the possible zoning changes that we will eventually bring to council. Clearly what the outcome of this was, was you wanted to take a look. If we're going to be looking at any more of these types of facilities, not the 980s, but the transit, the true transitional housing, you wanted to get a look at this before we do any more. And we, we hear that loud and clear. And that's all I have on that. And as far as COVID-19 update, I see the fire department emblem in the, in the box. So I know Chief Stanley is still here in terms of giving an update with COVID. The numbers have slowly started to edge down. To say it's turned a corner would not be an accurate statement. Today's daily was still above 100. The average, that seven-day average is slightly below 100, but there's also other numbers. And Chief helped me out, rescued me a little bit to help me with some of the terminology that, that I know you talked to Mr. Guerin about.
Yeah, you're absolutely correct that we have not turned a corner. You know, we've seen some plateauing a little bit, but that should not be perceived as a false sense of security that we're out of the woods, you know, that the numbers are still high. The numbers of deaths still continue to rise in the county. Obviously, when you look at the numbers around the state as far as positives and as far as deaths, you know, they still are going up alarmingly on a day-to-day basis. You know, so we would really advocate for caution, you know. We're all sympathetic to extreme, extreme COVID fatigue, but we're very concerned about what will happen after this week's holiday and will we see a direct result from family gatherings and, you know, social interactions where we see those numbers peak again.
So as council knows, the county passed an ordinance to provide some authority to the health director. The health director is evaluating what steps might be done, but I think that given the fact that, for example, the mask ordinance is in place statewide, I don't think you're going to see anything from the county. The county's going to rely on the state, similar to the way we were relying on the state. We'll come back to you if we need to, but right now, you know, the mask order is still in place and we'll see what other stuff makes its way through the courts and we can evaluate it based on that. City Hall, as pointed out, remains closed through December 4th. I just want to see how Thanksgiving is. I hope everybody stays safe and distant and all that stuff that we need so that the numbers don't start spiking again following Thanksgiving. I got a report this morning, Canada celebrates Thanksgiving in October and they saw a spike after their Thanksgiving. I hope we don't have that happen here. I think, you know, I would like to be open. Though the mayor talked about building inspections and, you know, if somebody has a question, sometimes they just want to talk to a person face-to-face. I'm proud of the work we've done with online and all that stuff, but there is still some people like that human interaction. There are people who, I don't know why they do this, but they still like to pay their property tax bills in person, in cash sometimes. It sounds unusual because I, I mean, I work at City Hall and I mail it in. I mean, I don't understand it, but some people do that. I want to make sure that we're, we're sending the right message to them. So we're, we're going to evaluate it. I'm hoping that the numbers go down so that we can reopen. Other communities in the county, the larger ones, Fox Crossing is closed through the rest of the year. I'd like not to be there. So we're doing everything we can and happy to answer any other questions you might have.
Councilmember Allison Osby.
Thank you, Mayor. Mark, I appreciate that and thank you for the feedback. And, you know, I do sympathize and obviously am concerned about the numbers as well, but you know, I guess my question would be is, you know, we still do serve, serve the public and, you know, obviously if the numbers are high, I understand why City Hall might be closed, but for some of the reasons that you mentioned, especially with tax bills, but just because, you know, of the needs of the public sometimes for face-to-face, are you going to consider at all being flexible where maybe perhaps it's small numbers, but maybe by appointment only so that people can have access to City Hall and not be completely closed off as we've been now for a while?
Yeah, we've been closed for about four weeks now and, you know, we do look at situational circumstances and if somebody, if there's no other way, we'll, we'll accommodate somebody. We don't make a big deal about it, but we certainly do that. But when it comes to tax payments, the optics are not going to be good if we're not open. And I, I, I totally get that. I've done enough tax collections over the years to know that that's a very personal thing. So my goal is to reopen, but I'm going to keep looking at the numbers. And if we need to make exceptions and accommodations based on somebody's individual circumstances, we're going to do that. And I, we just did one today. That's just what happened and we admitted the person in the building and, and took care of them and, but we're trying to avoid that. We were down a number of people for a while and so that was part of it and we just want to make sure that it's not spread. Not spreading within City Hall amongst people, based on our knowledge, people are bringing it to work. So we're trying to minimize that contact as much as possible.
Two questions. One is for, for Chief, do you have information or has, has, I see that the chamber is doing a virtual town hall coming up regarding the university, the surge test site and, and the information coming back from that. Did you, did Mr. Guerin provide you with anything or the university in terms of what they're starting to see on the surge test numbers that are going through there?
You know, just a little bit, you know, that relative to the capacity, you know, that still have much more capacity for testing, you know, that it's not being utilized to the, the degree that would stress that system, you know? So still can accommodate more testing is what, what we're hearing today. That's, as far as the benefit of that, you know, since it's only been, been up and running, you know, two and a half, three weeks, they're saying still premature as of today to, to identify impact, you know, because the, the whole point of this, you know, one point of the, the surge testing was to see what it does, you know, to gather data and research. And so have not had enough window of time to, to get good results yet. You know, that's still encourage people to do it, you know? Anecdotally, is it making a difference? You know, I believe wholeheartedly, absolutely.
So that's the doIneedacovidtest.com where you can register. And I'll just say, yesterday morning, I was in and out of there in less than 10 minutes having gotten a time slot and then I had my results in less than 20 minutes. It's very simple, but the Sunny View testing site is still being conducted as well, correct? But one of the questions that came out of the community was the county numbers that are reported on the update where it says probable and, and then the other numbers, are those surge site test results reflected in there and if so, how?
You know, City Manager Roloff, correct me if, if I recount this wrong, that, you know, in the discussions that we had this morning, they are, you know, because when you test with the antigen test, the rapid test, you know, if you test positive, you're probable and then they immediately recommend that you have the PCR or that deeper nasal swab test as well, you know, so and that's what they use for confirmation. That's, that's how I always understand it. Mr. Roloff, is that the way you understood it too?
Yes, and I'm also cheating and looking at Councilmember Erickson's frame and she seems to be in agreement as well. So I'll rely on her professional inside information, but yeah, the probable is a new element and it's really about the antigen test, but they all factor in, to answer your question, Madam Mayor, they all factor into the numbers that the Health Department is, is releasing.
And then just one other question I had for Pam about the hours due to COVID at City Hall and the closures. There was at least one citizen who was interested in the running for council process and I directed them to your office. The question that I got was, can someone still come in and pick up their packet in person if City Hall is closed and if so, how?
We have a sign on the door that if they give us a call, we will bring them in and go through the information with them.
Okay.
And that kind of goes to Councilmember Allison Osby's point. Do we make those? We absolutely need to do that. That's, that's not, that's more than just picking up a, a parking, paying a parking ticket. This is something substantial, we want to make sure. Plus they're our future bosses, we got to take care of them, so. So yeah, we're going to do those types of things on a regular basis. With that, I, I think Scott Williams is going to do a little video. Some of you may be aware that our local state legislators wanted to get in on the recognizing Chief Stanley for his award from the National Fallen Firefighters Foundation. The mayor at the last minute couldn't make it. So Mayor, we have a little surprise that we have, a little video for you to see. Councilmember Mubrower's there, so I want to give him kudos, but for the rest of you, you'll be able to just have a quick video. Go ahead, Scotty.
It's an honor to be here today to recognize Chief Stanley for his efforts in receiving the Firefighter Hero Award. I just want to say, over the course of my last four years getting in all the Oshkosh Fire Department, you know, you, it's been a pleasure and to recognize you and all the firemen for all the work they do out there, thank you. Certificate of commendation and congratulations. Whereas on October 28th, 2020, Oshkosh Fire Chief Michael Stanley received the esteemed Firefighter Hero Award from the National Fallen Firefighters Foundation in Maglite. Whereas the Firefighter Hero Award is an honor given to most firefighters who exemplify what it means to provide outstanding service and who have demonstrated a commitment while holding excellence throughout their profession. Whereas through his tenure as Oshkosh Fire Chief, Michael Stanley has consistently provided exceptional service to his community by going above and beyond his duty, focusing on mental health and physical health issues amongst firefighters, creating a peer support team in the Fire Department to help combat mental health problems, as well as numerous other initiatives to improve his community and the lives of firefighters. Whereas Chief Michael Stanley is well-deserving of this honor, having been instrumental in creating a senior citizen fall prevention initiative by working to address the root cause of falls within this older population, as well as helping reopen a local homeless shelter and equip firefighters with body armor. Whereas Chief Michael Stanley has done a phenomenal job serving as the Oshkosh Fire Chief and perfectly demonstrated what it means to be a true hero. Therefore, State Senator Dan Fine, State Representative Michael Stra, State Representative Gordon Hints, you hereby commend and congratulate Chief Michael Stanley on receiving the prestigious Firefighter Hero Award from the National Firefighters Foundation in Maglite and thank him for his continued outstanding service to the Oshkosh community.
And just to let you know, the masked legislators were Senator Dan Fine, Representative Gordon Hints, and Representative Michael Stra. So I actually didn't recognize one of them. I'm not going to tell you which one I didn't recognize, but you know, when you haven't seen them in six, nine months, you kind of forget. So really appreciate them being there to recognize them and again, congrats to Chief Stanley. So really appreciate them being there to recognize them. And then again, congrats to Chief Stanley.
Very good. Very nice. Thank you for sharing that. I was so disappointed that I couldn't make it at the last minute. All right, folks, Eva, Diva, Diva, who's ready for a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Do you have a second? All right, please take the roll.
Ford.
Aye.
Allison Osby.
Aye.
Osby.
Aye.
Mubrow.
Aye.
Erickson.
Aye.
Peshal.
Aye.
Omari.
Aye.
We are adjourned.
Good night, everyone. Happy holidays.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you, too.